I'd like to call our Januaries for the board meeting to order. Um, roll call please.
Ryan Giesi.
Present.
Cody Gubelski.
Present.
David Schmidt.
Present.
Brian Mahon.
I am present.
The board of educators will stand and hear the board's allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And at this time, our virtue card, uh, tonight's virtue card is going to be justice.
Justice, okay. Okay, justice. Practicing justice is being fair. It's solving problems so everyone wins. You don't prejudge. You see people as individuals. You don't accept it when someone acts like a bully, cheats, or lies. Being a champion for justice takes courage. Sometimes when you stand for justice, you stand alone. You're practicing justice when you treat everyone fairly, think for yourself and refuse to prejudge, avoid gossip and backbiting, own your mistakes and fix them, protect people's rights, including your own, solve problems so everyone wins. Affirmation. I act with justice. I stand up for the rights of others and myself. I have no need to pretend or defend. I choose to make amends.
Justice.
Justice.
Justice. Thank you, Pat. Board of Education Guidelines. With an open mind, we'll establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We'll work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We'll work toward building a trusting relationship where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, public comments. We need public here, guys. Come to the meeting so we can have public comments. At this time, we're showcasing schools and student learning. And we're very pleased tonight to have Mr. Paul be here with us this evening. And, uh, just for those, each month, we review the overarching results. And Mr. Lee here kind enough to come tonight and share some of his work.
So can I read the overarching results policy just real quick? The Acusa School District develops students who excel academically, act responsibly, display good character and citizenship, and reason and solve problems rationally. We focus on preparing our students with the skills they will need in today's global community. So in that context...
Yes.
I don't know, John, do you want to say anything before we get started, or can Paul jump right in?
I think Paul can jump.
Awesome.
Yeah, I'm going to talk a little bit about the work that has been done over the past, since actually April I was here last time to report. Before I get into that, so I gave each a copy. It looks like this. Just want to remind you of the responsibilities of the long title. It's Family, School, Community Outreach Liaison. Identified in different ways in different places as well. Keep on the website. I think it says Community Outreach Liaison, which is great. But, uh, the job description's there. I just want to remind us all of that. That the liaison creates, strengthens, and maintains the bridges between the family, school, and community. The liaison facilitates and provides leadership for the collaborative process and development of a continuum of services for students, families, and community members within the Acusa School District community. And when I took the job and started to think about how that might be implemented, I really think about it in three focus areas or buckets of work. So that's what the Venn diagram represents. Where the community and the school and the family, those interactions are. There's really three buckets of work. Uh, but before I get into the what, uh, we've been up to the past year, I want to just remind us all about the why. It has to do with what Terry just read there. Um, you know, the vision of the district is to empower all students to succeed in the global community academically, emotionally, and socially. And I thought about that. It's almost like a rope with three braves, right? Three cords. It's that strong. And you need all of those to make the rope strong. And I would say one of the barriers that we would have, one of the barriers towards success in academics as well, all of them, is that social-emotional piece. If, if those things aren't strong, the academics suffer as well. And one of the greatest barriers that we face in that area is of trauma in the lives and the families of our students. And we all know the effects, I think, of trauma on especially children's brains and the ability to learn. Trauma can take a lot of different forms. You know, it can be anything from abandonment to neglect. It could be witnessing or suffering violence, something working to mitigate through our Handle With Care program, incarceration of a loved one. We see that happening in our district. Systems-induced trauma that I'll call such as removal from a home or multiple placements, or separation from siblings. That's a reality that we face. Living in chaotic environments or environments with inconsistent financial or housing resources. And I, um, I don't know if you're aware, but the county puts out a report. In fact, the next iteration is due pretty soon. It's called the CHIPS Report. And there's some really good numbers to know in there. I gleaned a couple just to frame this up so we understand that our students experience trauma on multiple levels. Poverty has risen in Wood County from eight percent in 2006 to 11.3% in 2015. What that looks like on the ground for us. Eligibility for free reduced lunch, we know, has risen dramatically. It was 35% in 2007, and last year was 53 percentage-ish. So we know that that's increased. Other effects of economic stresses on the family. We see drug addiction and trafficking is, trafficking is still a problem in our area due to our location near the I-39 corridors, being centrally located. Our community, and I know this from rubbing shoulders with other chaplains, I'm a police chaplain as well. Uh, our community, for a community of size, has far more drug activity than rural communities relative to our size that aren't located. And, you know, Brian Mahon could talk all day about that kind of stuff. Trauma can, can lead to self-medicating behaviors. Uh, one of the, actually, a focal point of the CHIPS Report deals with that, especially in youth. Recent, according to the CHIPS Report, one in five high school students in Wood County will have had five drinks or more recently. So that's self-medicating. That's trying to deal with trauma at home the best way they can. And sometimes that leads to substance abuse. So trauma, we know then from the research, interferes with the children's ability to learn, to function properly, to lead, uh, social and emotional and academic. It, it interferes with a lot of success, which is what we're all about, right? So that's kind of the, the why behind what I do and the work I'm engaged in. Um, the purpose really of all the activity of the fiscal, the Family, School, Community Outreach Liaison, is to mitigate the effects of trauma in our students' lives so that they can succeed in all three of those areas: academically, socially, and emotionally. And that's really what I'm engaged in. And then I do that in these three buckets of work. So that's the why, uh, behind the work that we do. I want to go through, uh, the report lists out a lot of the whats that I've been engaged in since April of last year. I'm going to walk us through that fairly quickly because I really want to get to some questions too if you have time for that. And I'll highlight just a few. So I'm not going to read every bullet point. If you can read that. One of the first bucket of work I want to talk about is the community and school bucket. And this is really that, that area where that intersects, where I'm focusing my work on representing the school district in coalitions and other community-based organizations that impact the school district, right? One example, there's many here. You can see the various coalitions that I represent the district on. So I attend these meetings, the Hunger Coalition, Homelessness Coalition, Wood County Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Task Force, which I'm going to mention again here in just a moment. Stuff the Bus, Stuff the Desk. I sit on that committee. Love Inc. of Southwood County, I'm on that board. And then I serve through chaplaincy on the Acusa Police Department. One of the things I want to highlight in this bucket of work is that Handle With Care piece, and I mentioned it. This was an initiative that was started, uh, really in the beginning of 2018, so last school year, as a collaboration between the Police Department and the school district. We had, actually, as a chaplain, I was on scene or at part of the debrief team. It was a tragedy that happened within our school district, a home. And I was on the debrief team about a week after the event happened and found out that there were students in that home that we didn't know about. And talking with the chief of police, and we just said, boy, that's got to change. We have to know these things. And so, uh, with the help of the Police Department, we were able to find a great program that exists in West Virginia, and we adopted it here. Since, now, totally, I think we've had nine Handle With Care reports. Since April, since I reported last time, we've had five. Uh, I can't remember how they're approached. I think we had two or three this year and two the year before in April. So what that looks like is if there's a, uh, an incident in a home of one of our students where the police are involved, it could be a domestic violence, could be a drug thing that they're witness of, that we immediately get a report. And they have been, I would say, every time, we've gotten a report and been able to interview the next day. And we're able to convene a meeting amongst the building, uh, counselors, whatever building that those students are in. We develop an actual report. Then we mail the teacher, and all as we tell them, they have no details. They just get a Handle With Care that says this student has witnessed a traumatic incident in their home in the past 24 hours. Just handle them with care, a little bit of extra love. And if you see any behavior that's not typical for them, please let the counselor, Brian Grill, or me know, and we'll, we'll follow up with that. Uh, I'm happy to say, real recently, Brian and I were invited to join this Wood County Task Force on Child Abuse and Neglect. And one of the goals of 2020 for that task force is to take the Handle With Care and the Acusa model and blow it up countywide. And so Sheriff Becker is behind it. We've got the task force behind us. We're going to be sitting on that committee. Uh, between Sheriff Becker and I, we're going to be spearheading an effort to take that Handle With Care countywide. So pretty proud of that, you know, it was birthed here. And we get to be a leader. And honestly, my goal is to see it go statewide. So we're going to be working that way. So that's one bit of work in that bucket. And you can read the other things that I'm involved in, in the community school, where those two things overlap. Uh, the second kind of focal area is where the family and community overlap. And the work in this, in this area focuses on connecting families in need with resources in our community. I would say this is kind of the social work piece, if you will. This is helping our families that have, uh, real felt needs in their home, not sure how to navigate the social services systems or how to find relief for whatever problems are going on at home. And the problems, again, these are economic, usually stresses in our home that affect our kids. And they bring those things to school with them every day. And the better job that we can do at relieving those, those stresses in the home, the better equipped our students are going to be at learning and being better off socially and emotionally in the school setting. So, uh, I won't be into all these. I do want to give you just kind of one example. This shows you, uh, I almost thought about just giving you a day in the life of the fiscal, of me, what it looks like. But this is a good example. I can't mention names. But we had a family with several children who had experienced a traumatic event in the home that led to loss of employment. Uh, and then the myriad of hardships that followed that, all right? Now, we were able to come alongside the family, and I have a list of, just to show you the kind of supports that are needed in these circumstances. Uh, we helped them navigate the systems in place in our community. Wood County Human Services, Love Inc., the Rome Fire Department Holiday Baskets, the Backpack for Kids Program, Sacred Hearts Angel Tree Christmas Gift Program, Cleansing Waters Laundry Ministry, you probably know about that one. And then individuals from our community. And then I just got a call today to help them figure out how to become foster parents. So all of those, that work has to be coordinated by someone. It just doesn't happen. And most people that find themselves, uh, in these kind of hardships, they're struggling just to make it day-to-day. They don't have necessarily the time or sometimes the energy to pursue the solutions to their problems. And so, um, over the past, since April, my caseload, uh, this kind of situation has been nine families. But it's, uh, more regular. You get odds and ends kind of calls, like, hey, we need this right now. You know, so a lot of crisis calls. Uh, and we find these students, or these students and these families either through referrals from teachers or counselors or principals, people who are involved in the lives of the kids. So we get referred to them through Brian. Comes to me, and then we begin to work in these areas. So that's what that bucket looks like. And I, again, when I speak to people with the work I do, I would call that the social work piece. And then the final, uh, area is where the family and the school intersect. And that's, that area focuses on engaging families. If the social work piece is more of a reactive, like we're reacting to the circumstances families find themselves in, this is the proactive piece. Okay, this is the piece in trying to develop a curriculum, scope, and sequence for parenting classes. So last year, we ran our first, um, uh, Board of Learning Academy. We had 10 families, uh, graduate from that. We're offering that, again, that's a partnership, by the way, three partnerships between us, United Way, and the Y. And great curriculum on the preschool element, so how to get their children ready to learn. And so it's, it's great information, helps them prepare. And then we actually take the information that evening, it's six weeks. And each evening, there's something that's presented on child development. And then they get a chance to actually go down and practice it with their kid for the last 15 minutes. So it's very practical work. Now, we've got, we are running it again beginning February 4th for six weeks. Uh, it's free. We provide a free meal to the families that come. And, uh, right now, we've got six families signed up, but I know there's more coming. So I'm guessing we're going to be in that 10 to 12. In the fall, we also did a, we're starting to do at Humkey, some, uh, parent workshops. We did one on the Five Love Languages of Children. I don't know if you're familiar with the book. It just helps parents understand how their children gives, give and receive love and to be able to understand their child better. We did a one-night, uh, kind of just a workshop on that. We are going to do another workshop in February. Officer Colas coming to do a workshop on, uh, apps, you know, phone apps. What's, what are good apps and what are dangerous apps? And we've seen recently the effect of some bad social media, right? So again, this area of the work really focuses on parent engagement. How do we ramp that up? How do we get families involved in their child's education? And again, creating that environment, uh, whether it be in the school or especially at home, uh, to create a success academically, emotionally, and socially. So there's, again, you can read through the other bullet points. There's other stuff that we've been involved in. But I just wanted to highlight one from each kind of bucket of work, and I didn't want to take too much time to do that. Really wanted to open it up. If it's okay, Brian. You have any questions about the work that's being done and, um, what does it look like, the effects, that kind of stuff?
Well, I just wanted to interject quick. I think it's something as a district and for Paul to celebrate, um, you know, with all the work being done, with hunger, trauma, poverty. You know, even if you don't see it or someone's not showing it, it's there. Especially in the Acusa with low income. And they don't know about the resources or may not be aware of the resources. They don't know where to go as a district. And for, um, running the position, this is something that I think is, is very important. So I think it's something that we need to celebrate as a, as a whole. So, thank you, guys.
Can I just say too, um, on that point, I was presenting at the Wisconsin Rapids Retired Educators Association. They invited me to come and talk because, you know, kudos to the board for creating a position like this. This position, I'm an odd bird. This position doesn't exist, well, in a good way. This position doesn't exist in a lot of, in a lot of school districts. And I had a school board member from another district say, we need someone like you, like that. We need some of this work to be done. So I just want to say kudos to the board in this district for having foresight to know that, what the causes are, how we can help kids learn better, mitigating those traumatic effects.
Is there a way that, can we get that CHIPS Report? And how do we get it?
Absolutely. It's available online. It's a fairly hefty document.
Yeah.
I think the last one, so the one I was citing, I think, came from 2016 or 17.
Okay.
But I just was talking with Wood County, and, uh, the next one's coming up very shortly. It's good reading.
You want to send it to?
Yeah, sure.
I mean, I could access it, but if you have it.
Yeah, I've got it. I'll load it. Yeah.
I really want to echo, um, uh, Cody's, Cody's points about the value of this within our schools. And, you know, I think Humkey, the greatest impact they can have as in those early years, but we certainly do understand that it happens at other places. Have you been called to other, other, other schools?
So the one example of the family that we serve, they actually have children in all three schools.
Oh, boy.
And I guess most of that interaction with other schools has been through that, that bucket of work, the social work bucket. Although, um, and I, I did spend some time at AMS talking with Nathan. As I've been building out, you know, because in some ways, we were building the job description or job as we were flying. And I guess most of that interaction with other schools has been through that, that bucket of work, the social work bucket. Although, um, and I, I did spend some time at AMS talking with Nathan. As I've been building out, you know, because in some ways, we were building the job description or job as we were flying a plane. That's done almost, I would say, I, I, each of these buckets, by the way, I developed a 100-day work plan around. So there's a much more detailed document that I didn't want to, you know, burden you guys with. But there's very detailed, uh, work. And all of that work is beginning to shift over to ongoing, where the deadlines used to be, set this up, set this up, set this. A lot of that work is being done, so it's allowing me to branch out into some of the new schools. I've been over at AMS. I try to be over there, um, as often as I can. Uh, there's more work. And honestly, what I'd like to do is be able to sit down with Mr. Black and Mr. Johnson and say, okay, now we kind of know what this is, what might it look like for you. Where are some gaps that you need some bolstering? And I don't know that. Those are discussions we need to have.
And I think we've got to be any setup.
Yeah, we, we're doing it.
Yeah, a couple of weeks.
Yeah, just that's the net next up. My dealings with other board members from school districts around the state come here in the same thing you just said, that they need somebody like you as well in their school. When I, um, researched before the position came about, the best stuff I could find that's close is, almost all of it's urban. So it's neighborhood schools that, you know, how urban schools are really tight around a very box in an urban setting. They might have a person that is doing this kind of work in that grade, but almost nothing real by far.
I have another question. So, um, this is the epitome of a, it takes a village.
Yes.
So at what point do you reach your capacity, though?
That's a good question. In the social work part of it, uh, that can be, you know, people work is the most important work, I believe. If you help people, you know, things come along. But people work can be the most inefficient work because people are complex. And solutions are not easy. The right way to do things is not always easy. It takes, it's complex. These are complex issues. You know, I don't know, I don't really know that. I don't think I'm at, like, the caseload I have now isn't, I, I would have room. But depending on what other programs or areas you want to grow, like how you add more cases than the limits, how much more I can do for, you know, these other areas. So it's really kind of a, it's, it's a moving kind of target. And it's not easy to pinpoint. So I don't know, capacity-wise, um, I don't think I'm there yet. You know, there's still some, uh, stuff I'd like to see done. But I also believe in building teams and passing responsibilities off to people. So one of the other things that I didn't talk about is volunteerism. We're tracking, I'm tracking very closely volunteerism at Humkey. I could tell you, it's an impressive amount of hours. We had 50-plus volunteers last year. I track and log those minutes. And it's something like 1,500 hours that we had last year in volunteerism, just at Humkey. So that's a full-time person. So, but as we develop volunteers, uh, in some of our parent organizations like Hippo, I would like to see take some more responsibilities, just beyond fundraising and that kind of stuff, actually running volunteering in the school. And if you can pass some of that, then you can still build more capacity in the system. That answer your question?
It does. I can just see that this is just a, it's going to be continuously developing.
I, I think so. It shifts around. I would, you'll get a good framework. I think we have a framework going.
Oh, yeah.
But where that, you know, work is shifts around the framework because it's people.
Thank you, Paul. Do you have other questions?
No.
I just want to say thank you, Paul, and thank you for, for your time here and that comment about it takes community. I think that was so key because we can't do it all. And, you know, your interface with the other groups and organizations within the, within the county and within the state is so beneficial. And the more we can integrate with those community services, the more those community services can work with us, the better off we are. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the time.
For being here. And we actually are very fortunate to have a father-daughter team here.
She's got a nice plaque, though. He does it. The honorable.
The honorable.
Yes, the honorable Eleanor Leiter. But before we can get to Eleanor, I must re- yield the board to Mr. Brian Grill. I believe.
No, she's not there.
Oh, Eleanor, you got her. You are going to.
I appreciate it, though.
Um, so this week and next week, Student Council is going to be working to give, um, all of the high school students a, like, goodie bag for the semester ending into the new semester. Um, we don't have finals anymore. I still think of, like, semester ending as finals time because that was my freshman year. So I'm still thinking about that, but we don't have that anymore, which I'm grateful for. But, um, uh, the school or the events committee under Student Council is working on getting a dodgeball tournament again in the high school. So that is hitting the ground and running with it in the next few weeks. Um, I believe it's somewhere in the middle or of March or February. I'm not really sure when. Um, and then we have four different committees that I'm pushing them all to do something before spring break is here. So, um, and then we're going to work with you guys soon to get into the high school and talk about the referendum.
Okay. And we do have a date set for that. We do?
Well, here's another.
You guys. Okay.
Great.
You looking at me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seems like you guys would have.
Yeah, we were contacted by Ms., Ms. Hart.
Yes.
And she did provide us a date.
Yes.
So I don't.
I got to make sure that's not my turn.
Do you have? Catching me by surprise. Are we all supposed to be there?
Well, I think it was.
As many as, you know, I could probably be there.
I think it was going to be just a presentation on, you know, what the referendum was and just the things. Um, but if you guys could be there, I think, you know, we have their, we have the audience. And if they can hear from all facets.
You know what the date is?
I don't think I have it in my calendar.
I would like to be present for that. We have a lot of athletes there, so.
That's great. I'll find it here.
There's been so many dates going around.
Yeah, that's true.
There it is. Meeting February 7th during advisory time. Email Eleanor for more questions.
What time is that?
Advisory is at 9:30. Yeah, it's 9:30 to 10:00.
9:30 to 10:00 on February 7th. Looking forward to that.
February 7th. That would be impressive to have the board there.
Yeah, yeah. So thanks for bringing it up.
Where is Advisory Hill?
We're going to be in auditorium.
This will be in auditorium.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
I don't want to assume.
And I certainly, you know, the referendum is going to be the key thing. But, you know, if we do have a board there, I think it's for the school body to learn more and understand more about what we do, or
Yes.
that would be ideal time, you know. For the school body to learn more and understand more about what we do or that would be a ideal time, you know. Um, so that would be a fantastic, guys, if we could do that.
Thank you for providing leadership on that. Yep, good job.
And upcoming events, mentioned dodgeball, that's a big one. And. The new semester's starting.
New semester's starting.
Congratulations.
That's crazy. Said halfway there, you're halfway there?
How did it go by so fast? It seemed like we just started.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Feel like it was just so deep into a homecoming week.
Hmm.
Now it's over.
Yeah, I mean, so Eleanor, I'm curious what you're putting in these little bags. Have you done, have they done this before?
No, they haven't. Um, I think we're putting like pencils. I really wanna put stickers in them. Uh, some like candy, like Smarties, um, and then, I don't know, I don't, we have a few other, yeah, a few other tiny things, but. Everyone in the school should get one, so.
Eleanor, do you, do you, do you know if they have a col- uh, holiday wholesale?
No, I don't.
Cause stuff is really cheap there.
Alright.
It's down in the dells. I mean, even if you have to go pick it up, but I think they would like to.
They probably have the bags already packed, do you?
No, we don't.
Oh, you don't?
Uh, my ass is probably a little late for that one. You could still get it if you wanted to, I think.
Alright.
I mean, it's holiday wholesale.
I will go go to the Dollar General.
What's it?
I will go go to the Dollar General.
Well, it's gonna be cheaper.
I'm a real local and go to the school nutrition department.
Everybody's got a solution.
Why was that decision?
Hi?
Bieber's, there's one, one even a very local is Bieber's.
Every story.
I know, okay.
Lot of candy.
Your sourcing options are. Eleanor, thank you for what you bring to the board. A process of pressure, was there anything else that you would like to share? Oh, we just wanna thank you for being here and it's kinda special to have a father-daughter team here, so, thank you, guys. Pretty special. More special than next guy, Brian, just kidding. Um, Mr. Grill, our director, our director of, it's a hard act to follow.
It is a hard act to follow. They are wonderful, so.
But Mr. Grill, your time's up.
Um, the main thing I wanna highlight this month, so upcoming on Wednesday, February twenty-sixth, is our Child Development Day. Over at the Nacusa Community Center from nine to six P M. Um, I wanna encourage all families, cause it's jointly done with four K and five K registration. But this is if you have a child that's two to three years old as well, and you just wanna do almost like a well check to make sure they're hitting their developmental milestones. We have different stations to check their hearing, their vision, their speech, and just different developmental areas. So please bring your child in, cause kinda like we've always said, we wanna make sure we're helping our students as early as possible. So if everything's on track, then tell you, yup, everything's looking good. If there's an area where you could work with your child or if we see a need. For us as a school to help with your child, to intervene early and help you as a family, we wanna be able to do that. So how best to communicate with us, because you do have to set up the appointments, because. We do have to make sure we have enough staff to make sure we can screen your child. Just call Tiffany at the Humke main office. Anytime during school hours, but you can schedule appointment from nine to six P M and we are. Also, as part of this, we have community members come in and there's tables around. Paul's always there on behalf of Hippo and Humke Elementary, but then we also always have. Um, this year, a new one, we have the dental office your daughter works with, I can't remember the name.
Dr. McDonald.
Dr. Carla McDonald.
Dr. Carla McDonald.
River Hill Dental.
Yup, River Hill Dental will be there to talk about, you know, teeth care with your children. Um, Brian Mahan last year had flyers out there for a little leak. We really want families to know. Opportunities had starts there, WIC is there, we have different community resources, so families are getting connected early as well if they need any of those. Services, so, and we just wanted to get connected to our community. We want them to know. Nacusa's a place where we care about your child and we have sports opportunities, play opportunities and different things for you to get connected as a family, so. I just encourage families, please come out, you know, it's a good way, like I said, just to see where your child is developmentally and get connected to our community.
So will you say the date again and?
Sure.
It's, I'll say, it's February twenty-sixth, it's held at the community center and. It's just a really fantastic opportunity. A lot of our, our dedicated staff are over there, the best of our best.
Yup.
Are over there and it's just, you know, an opportunity to see where your child is, to see what services our community has. And the, the good thing about our district and, and it really helps you set yourself on track to where you know your kids are, are and. Um, it's a resource that, you know, you're foolish not to take advantage of. And again, to reiterate, to make those appointments, to contact, uh, the, listen, Tiffany Reinschmidt at, at Humke Elementary. And I just can't reinforce enough that it's a good day, a fun day for families to go there and.
Yup.
Um, I see the best of our best go over there, so I, I've witnessed that and it's a resource to take advantage of.
And I wanna give a special shout out, thank you, cause always the high school provides, um, volunteers with National Our Society to come play with kids as they're waiting for their next rotation. So we always have a Lego tower building competition with the kids that they love. But then too, our police department has a station where they do a, uh, parents. Kinda like if your kid were to go miss here, things like that, where they give them a voice recording, picture, things like that. So in the event, we hope that never occurs for any child, but they give them this nice little packet of. So that way, when you talk to the police department, you have all those things on hand, so. A lot of community work goes into putting this event on, so I wanna thank everyone that helps us put this together.
But thank you, Brian. Is that it?
That's it.
That's an easy month from you.
I know, just wait till my next.
Oh, I thought you were so lucky. Cause I know that, I think the next subject is gonna be a tough one, but no, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Um, I read. I, I read my, I read my book, I read my book, I didn't bring it along. Um, but I, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, we have fun in the business office too. Every month around July, the end of July, we just have a real good time with those auditors. So, um, we had new auditors this year. Uh, we, uh, contracted with Clifton Larson Allen L. L. P. And it was a bit of a rocky start, which it always is when you have new auditors come in, they have to get used to your procedures, where things are, um. They have to, uh, probably understand small school districts where, you know, we don't have a person to do every little. Piece of internal control, so, um, it was a, it was growing pains, I guess I'll say. Um, so they completed, uh, their, their work in July, August, September, October, November, and they finally had done in December. So we got the audit report in December and I did, um, distribute that to you. Um, there were just a few things that I wanted to note. Uh, the general fund in the audit report is, consists of two funds, it's the Special Education Fund and the General Fund, and that's basically the operating funds, that's what the. Um, school district runs its instruction on. So, uh, Special Education Fund is by law to have a zero fund balance at the end of the year. So basically what happens, because there's, you know, a lot of expenses in special education with not a lot of revenue. So what happens is the General Fund has to do a transfer into the fund twenty-seven to make it zero. Um, and so the General Fund is, uh, had a, a decrease of about one thousand two hundred dollars last year. Um, as the ending, um, as we ended the year, so that was good news. So there's good news in the business office and then there's some not so good news. Um. The second item that I wanted to talk about was our, um, short-term borrowing. Uh, this year, this, in eighteen nineteen, we had to increase short-term borrowing by three hundred thousand dollars. So we went from one point six million to one point nine million. Um, and typically with a district, the way we are funded, because we are so heavily reliant on taxpayers. Is, um, our cash flow is what really kinda screws us up. So in, typically in November and December, our cash flow is really, really, really low. And we usually utilize every dollar of that one point nine million just to make it through to January, where we're now getting our tax payments in. So.
Borrow money and we pay short-term interest on it.
Correct, correct.
And that's a cost to the district.
It is, it is absolutely a cost. So, um, the way I'm, I'm looking at our fund balance, because we have a fund balance of just a little over three million. In order to eliminate our short-term borrowing, to even out our cash flow, we would have to have a fund balance of at least five million or even more. So we're quite a ways away of, um, of ending our short-term borrowing. Um, so, and it, it's funny, because there are other districts that are like us. Um, that have a fund balance of maybe three million dollars and have the same type, type of dynamics. However, they may be seventy-five percent funded by the state and only twenty-five percent funded by the taxpayers. So their cash flow is a little bit more even throughout the year and they don't have to borrow as much then. So it just, it just kinda happens the way Nacusa is, where we have to short-term borrow. So another thing I wanna bring up is, um, when the auditors complete their audit, they, um, it's called a single audit. And what they do is they look at all of our grants. And if we exceed a certain dollar amount in the revenue that we receive in grants, I think, I believe it's seven hundred thousand dollars, I believe. Um, then they have to go in and say, okay, um, we have federal grants, we have state grants, and now we really have to dig into some federal grants. Because we have to make sure that you're following all the internal controls and everything that, so it's a deeper dive. They also have to do that for state grants. So for the federal grants, um, the deeper dive, what they did is for, uh, Title One and the Child Nutrition Cluster. So they really looked at every single thing that was happening in those grants. They looked at internal control, they looked at revenue, they looked at expenses, they did analysis, they did a ton of work. Um, and I was happy to say there are no findings in there. So then they looked at the state side and they looked at our special education state aid and they looked at our general state aid. And they did all the deeper dives in that and there were no findings there. So then, for the rest of the grants that they don't do deeper dives in, they actually just look to see if everything looks reasonable. Um, so as they were looking at my transportation, um, there was a couple of red flags that came up. And, um, it, this has happened in the past and that's why I'm so embarrassed to say it, because what happened is, uh. I get a report from transportation and I asked Safeway, I said, give me all the kids that rode the bus. I only want the general education. Students that rode the bus. The special education are funded differently, so I don't want the special education. So she gave me a report and I did not really dig into it and I didn't look into it, so I reported to D P I the report that she gave me. Well, we changed computer software systems at Safeway and it included all the special education students in there. So basically, we got funding over here from Special Ed and we got funding over here from the Special Ed, so we kinda dumbed it. So that was considered a finding, so, um, D P I or the auditors did write me up on that and they did submit that to D P I. Um, I have not heard from a response from D P I, but it is coming. And typically in these situations, I'll get a phone call and then I will have to, um, provide an explanation as to how it's going to not happen in the future. And then I probably will have to send them a couple of reports just to prove that I am looking and, you know, reviewing and making sure that I am following up on it, so. It's kind of a, you know, a slap, you know, and, you know, can figure it out, but I'm glad they did that because. It makes me look at the reports more closely. So, um, so we did have one, one ding. Um, so other than that, the auditors did, uh, provide an unqualified opinion, which means it's a clean opinion. So that ding didn't really affect our clean opinion. It basically means that the finances of the school district. On the, uh, items that they looked at represents fairly in this financial report, so everything, um. They're comfortable with how the district is represented financially.
You're supposed to say that with a little more joy, because you should be very proud of that.
Well, you know how I am though, it's a perfectionist and.
I know how you are, but the one finding and the complexities of school finance, so.
I know, it's just a computer caused the problem.
It was stupid. That's, that's just, that's just called what it is.
Okay.
Good job.
So, um, I do need a, a, a board approval to, uh.
You're supposed to say that with a little more joy, because you should be very proud of that.
Well, you know how I am though, it's a perfectionist and.
I know how you are, but the one finding and the complexities of school finance, so.
I know, it's just a computer caused the problem.
It was stupid. That's, that's just, that's just called what it is.
Okay.
Good job.
So, um, I do need a, a, a board approval to, um, approve the eighteen nineteen fiscal audit report, board?
I'm gonna like to call for a motion to, uh, the audit report as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor of receiving the question, I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Um. And then we are going to move on to open enrollment space availability.
Good to hear from me again.
Well, you had your chance, Brian.
You get it again though, you just can't get enough.
I know.
Alright, what I'm passing around is every year in January could be for open enrollment, season starts on February third. We have to discuss whether you as a board would like to set caps for our students with disabilities. Um, we have been doing this every year since I've been here, so the last four years. Um, and what I do every year, I calculate what the current enrollment is according to building. And disability category to say, here's the space that is currently being occupied. And I roll everyone up to the next grade and figure out how many units are gonna be available. Um. There's good news in looking at this, but there's also some downsides to it as well. Um. The good news is if you go to the very last page of this document, there is the current open enrollments out and current open enrollments in. So right now, I'm looking at students with disabilities, we do have more students that are opening, opening enrollment into our district than we do have open enrollment out. So that's good news that it appears our families are happy with the services that we are providing special education wise. And staying with our district, which is good to see. Um, but due to the number of families we have in our district and the number that are receiving services. Looking at the, all the pages current before this, so every page where I calculate. If you go down to the very last column where it says space for open enrollment, based on lead calculations. So that last column of every table, all but one says zero units available. So I would say all of our Special Ed case managers, we're at capacity. So I know we, if there are students looking at our district, we would like to say, hey, you know, we're, we are a wonderful district. But the challenge is we, for the number of staff we have available, we are working at capacity. So there's one area where we do have some open seats available and that's at Alexander Middle School. In our program for students with intellectual disabilities, so that's the one area we do have some units open.
What's, what's lacking? The capacity is just having another personnel staff, basically, for more enrollments? Is that, is that the big?
Certi- a certified teacher. So for some of our two, you will see with like, I'll just point out, for example, like, um, our high school intellectual disabilities, for example. If you look at the number of units there, like, it's one to thirty-four units for a teacher. Which that seems really high over the recommended caseload. And that's where we provide educational assistance support to help that teacher throughout the day. Because it's, the teacher can handle the caseload piece, it's just some of the student needs, she needs additional help and that's where we talk about. Do we need educational assistance, things like that?
Okay.
But the only way we would open up more seats is by adding special education teachers.
This is just for open enrollment, right?
Just for open enrollment, yes. So if a student moves in, of course, we have to accept them as a student with a disability and provide services. This is solely for open enrollment.
Is that something where, that our referendum is gonna help to take care of if we get the resume in place?
Right now, in looking at the referendum, we're not looking to add additional special education staff, teacher-wise, because. Our teachers that we have, we have a little bit, they're. Because our teachers that we have, we have a little bit, they're either right at the caseload recommendation or a little bit over. We're meeting the student needs of the students that are here. We like I said, we do have some educational assistance support there, but we're meeting the needs of our students with disabilities as it's written in their IEPs, so.
And I remember when you came, you did a you did a pretty in-depth analysis of our resources and and our capacity and what we could look at and it was very difficult. I believe it was your second year looking at those numbers where we hadn't put a cap on it. And that was difficult, but we also have to ensure that we're able to serve our students adequately. And and not and also be fair to our teachers and the resources that we have available.
Because.
And there's requirements as listed by the state for what 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 are what we have to provide. And what if we don't have it, we can't do it.
Correct.
But it's important to note too that these are kids that are are not residents.
Right.
So we don't, we do not get funded the full amount of any teachers that we hire. I think we only is it thirteen thousand or twelve thousand that we receive?
Thirteen.
Thirteen thousand dollars is all we can claim the other district. So if we have to appear an aide for forty five, including salaries and benefits, we don't recoup that at all.
Mm-hmm.
So then we eat it.
And that's why we've really put these limits in place.
Yeah. To lead the cause.
So what we're good, what we're looking at is maintaining the limits that we have, existing limits that we have set, which were pretty pretty.
Because of, don't go ahead.
They were pretty generous to begin with.
Yeah, well, and Lynn and I, sorry not to cut you off. We've worked hard to add our maintenance of effort and if we just have students keep if we have students entering our district, then we just keep adding staff, adding staff. Our maintenance of effort that we've worked to maintain and lower actually a little bit is gonna start going up again.
Right, and the maintenance of effort is ba- the state basically saying, you have to spend the same amount that you spent the last year, you have to spend it this year.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
Unless you have a valid reason for reducing expenses. So we have to, it it is a balancing act, it is terrible.
It is.
So it there's a lot of different variables attached to that, so.
And.
But we still try to serve every student, yes.
Correct.
And open enrollment for our general ed, we still have seats here.
Yeah.
Yes.
I didn't mean that.
Yeah.
Well, I I was just thinking, you know, so this isn't, this does not affect our resident students.
Correct.
We serve all kids in Nacusa, you're in Nacusa's school district.
Right, we serve, right, right. So and and that was the thing that I I want to quote your Dean mentioned that are we serving, are we meeting the needs of our residents at least? So we're doing that part and we're just saying, we're sorry, we don't have room for your child.
Correct.
At this point.
Yep, except at the middle school, one area.
Except at the, right, right, the one area where there's seven point work. Okay, that's all I get.
Yep, so like if you're a residence, if you're a resident of Nacusa too and we suspect there's a potential disability, we evaluate and if they qualify, they receive services because they're a resident of the school district.
Okay.
So.
And it used to be where, you know, if we had a a student with special needs transfer into the district. Used to be we could bill the whole full cost of that student to the other district. Then the state came in and says, nah, you're not doing that anymore, we're capping it. Thirteen thousand is the all that you can spend. And then we're like, well, wait a minute, how how are we gonna?
Provide those, yeah.
We can't, yeah, we can't deny anybody then, so then they implemented these caps.
Yeah.
So kind of balance that out a little bit.
Okay, okay.
It's all about the already done, yeah.
Yeah, hard decision.
Alright, okay.
But uh you you wanna keep the existing gaps and that's where the motion that we'd like to see right now.
Yeah. It's up to you guys, but that would be my recommendation, just so that way we can maintain with the staff that we have and we don't have to add additional staff right now.
Yep. Right.
I that would be my recommendation.
First that motion.
I'd like to call for a motion on the opens open enrollment space availability, do you have a first?
Second.
You have a second, all all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Grill.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
And next, we are going to move towards educational options.
Yes, so in front of you, you have uh pursuant to state statute, every year we have to come before the board and share the educational options. Alright, and that is making sure that our public here knows that there's other options out there to be educated. So that is out there on our website and that's listed here. Also, we need to share our accountability report, which just came out, we talked about that in depth, the report card. And then the special needs scholarship program and um I think well Brian went over that last year. But also for like open rolling out or moving to a different space, having a new, a different option. Do you want to just in a real quick nutshell, talk a little bit about what that means?
So. Every year we put this notes in there so families know. If a family is looking at for their child to attend a private school setting.
A a student that's in special ed currently here?
Currently here, a student with a disability looking to attend a private school setting. Uh there is a scholarship available where we as a district would be paying that bill. If they look at though, there are requirements to apply for this scholarship. And part of it would they would have to look at a minimum of three other districts and apply for open enrollment and be denied prior to even being able to look at this scholarship option. But you know, and two, the private school they need to be looking at needs to be certified by the state to say that they as a school would be able to provide services as outlined in the student's IEP. In this area, we do not encounter this much because the closest school district or private school environment that is part of this program is actually in Wausau. So and parents would still be responsible for getting them to school, driving them to school back and forth. This is a option that is utilized, I would say, in more like you were saying earlier, how more urban areas. Because that they do have a lot more schools that are hiring on special education teachers to provide those services. But right now in our area, we have to make families aware. But I'll say, since I have been here, we have not had a family pursue this option because it's not like um one of the private schools in Rapids because they haven't gone through the process to be qualified to receive those scholarships yet, so.
Okay, so the these three items call for a for approval.
At this time, I'd like to call for a motion on educational options and uh special needs scholarship program in eighteen nineteen accountability report. We have a first and a second. Uh all in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we last month, we discussed the the referendum, the resolution for referendum. And when we reviewed it with the the legal area, we were required to change the order in which our questions appeared on the ballot. And to be in line with the legal requirements. We have to review and approve that again here tonight.
So it's all the same information, just.
Different questions.
Just a different order. Question number one will be regarding the operational referendum. Um not to exceed two million dollars per year um for five years, non-recurring. And that's to maintain and 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 provide the services that we need for our students. Um the second question has to do with the uh capital improvements for those items that were identified. Through the survey process, the you know pretty exhaustive survey and recommendations on what our committee felt was important. And we as a board uh made that resolution in in December. And we're simply at this point um just noting that question number one will be the operational and question number two will be the capital. And if I could, I'd like to, any comments or discussion points? Okay, at this time, I'd call for a motion to approve that change.
Second.
We have a first and a second and a roll call please.
Call you, yes. David Schreit.
Yes.
I go yes, Brian, you go. Brian, easy.
Yes. So motion carried, very good. Thank you for that and as mentioned in the December meeting, these uh referendum issues are are so critical to our district. For the things that we have discussed so far this evening and that any the the uh governance uh policy discussion that we're going to be moving into. This is just so important to us as a district, we want to be working very hard. We need this as a district. Uh okay, I skipped right over something here.
Nope, here, good chance. We're in R two.
How come I didn't get any of our?
Oh, they're not on there, I'm sorry Brian.
Yeah, we need to cover our governance policy um. Our governance policy, where's your OE seven? Um let me call those, let me pick those up here guys, just one moment.
Your agenda's right up there.
Thank you. Policy governance, the first item that we're gonna discuss on policy governance is R two academic performance. And this is essentially, we looked at our state report card and we unpacked that that state report card. I'm very excited to say that this school district of Nacusa has a whole exceeded expectations.
Yes.
It's a reason to celebrate. Um a lot of work went into that. Um as we unpacked the 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 report cards, um we did breakdowns on the school. Um can you look at, can I look at the policy for R two?
Yeah, can you have me read it here?
Would you please, just the summary.
Yeah, all students, this is academic performance and application, all students regardless of their race, gender, disability and their socioeconomic status will be literate in reading, language arts and math. All students will be able to integrate and apply the knowledge, skills, attitudes and competencies acquired across all academic disciplines.
Thank you, Terry. Um we had a very robust discussion on in the board workshop on Thursday. And in summary, again, we need to celebrate that as a district, we exceeded expectations. And when we bring it break it down into schools, which you know, this is public information and 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 we want people to to know and understand what's going on in our schools. And we, is there any comments that anybody would, you know, uh John Keith? Would you like to just pick a few quick points on the high school?
On our report card, we were um, well, we were very excited, I mean, we were the the highest rated high school in the county and in our athletic conference. Um had some great growth scores when we looked at ELA, especially with ELA was really strong, which is certainly indicative of a lot of hard work that's been going on there over the last several years. And then uh you know, also I think with math, the changes that we've made, you know, we're going to be seeing continued growth there. So we're very happy with the report card.
That's a a very good point, when you talk about trends, this little picture I'm holding up here is a trend chart comparing us to school districts within our conference as well as uh trend charts of schools within our regional area. And I'm very pleased to say that our trend is up, up and up the last three years. And the other schools, with the exception of one, Terry, correct? With the exception of one school, we're the only school trending up, is that a correct statement?
Well, I think we we looked at like uh what Toma has been, the people have been all over.
They've been all over, but.
Districts have been, but yes, our scores, certainly we were at beating expectations and now we're on to exceeding.
And the fact that, you know, we were able to see that grow for the last three years is just enforcing the what the work is being done. And I'm not gonna be able to, in the time we have available, I'm not gonna give justice to the unpacking data that was in these reports. Um the we did, we did suffer a little bit in Humke, but we must remember that we we only test one class at Humke and it's really hard for one class to represent an entire school. Um that's just the way it falls, a lot of, a lot of elementaries have a fourth grade included, am I correct in saying that?
Fourth and fifth grade.
Yeah, you know, every district sets up their elementary as a highly format, so it's kind of unusual, only have one grade, one grade who's being assessed in there.
Yep.
So we don't have the benefits of having seen the growth, so our measures are very susceptible to that individual group of students at that.
Yep.
Based on that, can I?
Go ahead, I also, would you also comment on our internals versus that show?
Sure, yeah, well, and maybe John can talk about the the benchmarking that's going on at the elementary, but based on the score, we also want the world to know the work that's going on there, so maybe you wanna just talk a little bit about the work that ongoing work and having
Sure.
our friends come in from other schools and really help and sh- help share their ideas on what they're doing and giving us some insight on what we might try differently to to make improvements.
Well, anytime you feel like, oh my gosh, that was disappointing, you always gotta start to ask yourself, okay, what is going on? You know, and that's a question that, you know, we as a staff has been exploring and we're we're part of a a network to say um it's called Partners in Comprehensive Literacy and in that network of schools, we spend time really learning about best practices in the area of literacy and finding out what we need to do. Um so through that network, there is a couple of professionals who've done some excellent work and one of those schools that are a member group. They consistently just exceed expectations, so it's kind of like, alright, what are you guys doing and why aren't we doing that? Why haven't we figured that out yet? So along with that individual from that school and a member who was the director of our, it's called PCL, Partners in Comprehensive, came in and really did an assessment and the name of that assessment is ESALE, those are just letters for an acronym that means basically, how are you guys doing in literacy? So and with that, right now, they go through with a fine tooth comb and they're looking at instructional practices and things that we're doing. And from that, we basically take that information, we synthesize it. And we've gotten to the point right now, that was in December, we they came in and did that. We synthesized it, we've shared it with our literacy team and they're using that to continue the work. Now, at the same time, the work that we are doing is right, we just still have more work to do and some things to figure out and learn and grow. And that's where we're at right now, that's in the area of literacy, which is a key measure at elementary school, elementary school.
And that, you know, again, and I think some of this work, some of the work that's being done goes over into one of the operational expectations we discussed tonight with instructional programming. And that you are actively addressing that as a in, you know, the dedicated teachers that you have in your building and certainly the time you've spent on this. Um is, you know, responding accordingly and and it's not necessarily in response to that test period, you were doing it before those tests came on. I think that's a fair statement too, isn't it?
It is, and we and we have, you know, with that, then we have systems to monitor student growth and act on it and provide interventions to make sure that all kids, all kids are served. And and we're working to that that vision of having, you know, all students by the time they leave Humke.
It's not necessarily in response to that test period, you were doing it before those tests came on. I think that's a fair statement too, isn't it?
It is, and we and we have, you know, with that, then we have systems to monitor student growth and act on it and provide interventions to make sure that all kids, all kids are served. And and we're working to that that vision of having, you know, all students by the time they leave Humke be proficient academically.
Yep.
And that's what we're working towards and trying to create those systems and it is com- complex work.
And it takes sometimes three or four years, and I think that was presented for these things to really take, is that a fair statement for the the new styles or the, you know, the 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 skill sets to really become ingrained, is that a fair statement?
Well, you you know, you're really teaching, you know, staff new practices, so three, four years. And honestly, and you know, that's probably at a minimum. Um I would say it probably, you know, given that and the fact that you always wanna retain your best teachers and continue to work on and develop those. It is a work in progress, so it it does take at least three to four years.
And we, you know, I think, you know, that presentation last week and the work, I'd I'd like to say that we as a board, I for myself, um I think it helps me for improvement with that score, but the work that's being done, I'd like to celebrate. Um along with, you know, the work that has been done at the high school and at the middle school. Um. We're gonna, we we are on, we're on the right track, you know, and to see that trend line go up. Whenever you're trending up, you're going in a good direction. whenever you're trending up, you're going in a good direction. It's better than the other way around. And I'm certainly, other districts in our conference are certainly having different discussions on this subject than we are. So-
You know, I just, I just thought of something. I think it's really important to, as you unpack those, the report cards. If you look at our academic, academic achievement across the district, we are really working hard to create those tier one classrooms that are spot on with giving kids what they need to be successful. But that tier two, that the referendum's asking for more support and help to get those kids that aren't being successful with some interventions, that is going to play a huge part in really moving the needle in that academic achievement. Because our teacher, our staff is working extremely hard, right? So that's going to be something that we, we can take that message out and show, here's what we're able to achieve. We need more help.
And we've identified that need and, and yeah, that's something that that referendum just absolutely necessary for, for us to continue to provide that level of service.
But a good, good, that's something we can draw back to in our conversations with our stakeholders.
And, you know, as we look at these policies or this, our, our one, we want to look at the strengths. We want to look at weaknesses, opportunities for improvement, exceptions, and then compliance. And so strengths, um, I mentioned a couple. Is there any that? Anybody else would like to add from our discussion last week?
Well, I don't know if the two of your strengths or our weakness, but I just want to say something.
Sure.
And that is, I, I, I look at things that are a little, sometimes a little bit differently because of some of the things I've involved with. And I, I look at results. And obviously, we're getting good results in many areas. But I also look at the process. And, and I know for a fact that what we're doing and what I've seen, you know, in my years on this board is when we, when we try a process and maybe it doesn't work, we don't sit there and say, well, let's keep trying it. We go with something different. And I'm starting to see that the processes are working. Now, they're not all where they need to be yet, but they're still going forward. And they are upward. And the process is showing that they are trending upward. And, and the results, I believe, are going to follow in the year, in the next few years. So, that's, that's, that's what I'm at, you know. So strengths, weaknesses. It's hard to, it's hard to pinpoint stuff and say, okay, well, this is, and, you know, and, and pick on it. And say, this, you know, we need to do-
I think that's a good, I think that's good information.
Good difference, you know. Let's, you know, sometimes you just got to be patient with what you see as working. And just say, okay, let's, let's ride this out for a little bit longer, check and see. Like in, in the math program, we haven't fully established that, that CPM math, correct? It's, it's-
That's correct.
We got what, one, one more year until it's fully implemented at the high school level?
Yeah. So the intent is that it will go up through pre-calc. Um, and so then pre-calculus, and then at that point, we're going to evaluate, so.
Okay. But it could, it, you could take another step, potentially.
Could.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that's what I'm getting at. We're, we're not, we haven't fully implemented some of the processes that we're trying to judge, you know. So how can we say, you know?
Yeah. And even then, algebra two is in its first year this year, so.
So anyways.
And it takes time for it to-
We're moving into OE11 a little bit, so we're gonna get through-
Yeah, OE11 is-
We gotta get through this one first. We gotta, any further discussion than that?
Okay.
No exceptions noted. Um, find ourselves in compliance. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the results policy, R2 academic's performance. Calling for a motion to approve it. We have a first and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. The next, uh, next one we need to look at is, uh, well, we have it on the agenda.
It'll be in February.
Monitoring district administrators' performance. Because of the workload that we had in December and January, we're going to move that one off to February. So, the next one we move to, um, OE11 instructional programming. And the instructional programming piece was actually more in-depth than I would, than, than the unpacking of the, um, of the report card. Um, each administrator, each administrator in each, each school um, went through and did a detail report on the different curriculum that they're presenting, that they're utilizing. Um, the changes and, and improvements made, you know, the increase in AP courses, um, college preparatory courses. And, you know, base all the way down through K through V curriculum with regards to the changes in, uh, reading?
Readers Writers Workshop.
Readers Writers Workshop.
And, uh, math.
Bridges as well.
Math is starting, yeah.
Bridges program. Which, you know, these are, are proven programs and very exciting. This curriculum work takes time. And for me, as a board member, to read the work and body of work that's been done in this is truly, truly kind of humbling. And, um, I find this to be a strength. To find the, you know, observations, um, you know, the strengths are, are, you know, at the high school level, working with mid-state, Stevens Point. And, you know, trying to, you know, look at what's the next step for our students and preparing, preparing them for secondary education, um, or technical school education. Um, having the mid-state courses at the school, we have kids, sophomores, taking um, mid-state accredited programs for welding. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct.
That's a pretty amazing thing, that we have sophomores that are gaining mid-state credits.
College credit, yeah.
Yeah. Isn't that something? But that happened 10 years ago? No.
Well, I mean, sophomores taking AP courses too.
That's amazing too. It's, we've been, families have come to us and told us that they've saved almost an entire year of college expenses by going through all of the, um, college preparatory or college accredited courses. Is that a correct statement? That a, that a freshman would generally take in their freshman year. They able, they're able to do that while in high school. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, certainly a semester. I mean, a semester is a student.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody very proud of. Um, any comments from anybody else? Strengths, weaknesses?
Yeah. I mean, I personally just wanted to congratulate all three principals on their work and everything that, and producing these documents and everything they've been doing the past previous years and, and this year. And, um, just to highlight math and, um, even the CPM math, they're in their third year, it sounds like from last week. And all the reading that there's good support and resources going through that. So, again, just congratulate, uh, those three principals and all the work they've been doing in regards to that.
Leading edge. I think that, you know, we are finally, we're a district that is on the leading edge of, of where we want our curriculum to be and where our students want to be. So, at this point, we identified a number of strengths. Weaknesses, none, opportunities for improvement, none. Um, compliance, at this time, has a motion of war to accept OE11, uh, instructional programming.
I'll push that motion.
We have first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Again, our, our discussion there didn't do this justice, and I would welcome anybody to come in and, and really look at what we're doing for our students and the curriculum standards that we're, that we're utilizing. A great body of work. Uh, the next one, uh, guiding principle, uh, board member covenant.
Can I read that?
You can, please read that.
All right. So, board member covenants, in order to build and maintain productive, effective relationships, board members shall maintain communication and interaction that builds upon mutual respect and trust, embodies civility, and respects decisions made by the full board. Accordingly, members will focus on issues, not people or personalities, respect decisions of the full board, exercise honesty in all communications, make every reasonable effort to protect and promote the integrity and positive image of the district, and employ the following format to submit items they wish to have the board deliberate. Define the problem, propose a solution, and propose possible board action.
Thank you, Terry. Observations, our board is exceptional in the way that each of us can express our views. Even when we do not agree, which happens, we all have the same focus on the success of our district. Uh, the strengths, trust in the communication, each board member. Pat, you're one. You, you feel free to speak your mind when you want to. That's good. Cody, David, you all have your voice. And we want, you know, it's so important that each of you feel valued, that your voice counts. Um, decisions by the board are respected, even when an individual may not agree. Anything to add? This was sent to all board members. There were no noted exceptions emailed back.
And we have had some meetings where we didn't agree. And, uh,
But we flushed it out.
Flushed it out and we all, we all came to a conclusion at the end and we're good.
It wouldn't be good if we always agreed, would we?
No.
And, and once we, and once we decided as a board, that was it.
That's right.
It was done. And I like that.
Okay. Uh, any further discussion? Without that, I call for a motion to approve GP dash nine.
So, move.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, and again, I just, I just really want to express that in the instructional programming and R2 unpacking that task, in the time period we have, we couldn't give a justice. We could spend easily three hours on each topic. Um, but we have so much to be proud of as a district. Um, and at this point, we are at consent agenda. Um, Mr. Podolsky, would you mind doing donations?
Yep. All right. Backpack for kids, $550 from Sacred Heart Collections. We have $20 from NHS Food Drive, $65 from Bethlehem Women Admissions, $100 from HCD Homemakers, $240 from Jim and Sandy Quinn, and $200 from Jim Hustleman to NYA. And thank you very much, those donors, on helping out our students, community, and district.
Fantastic. At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Uh, future agenda items. Uh, February 16th.
It's actually the 13th and 18th, I'm sorry.
That's fine. 13th, uh, February 13th is our board workshop and February 18th is our regular board meeting. Um, the school board convention will be occurring next week.
Yes.
Next week.
Tuesday through Friday.
Wednesday through Friday?
Tuesday, well, it's Tuesday because we have some, some meeting about Tuesday.
Um, David, you're WASP delegate.
Yes.
Um, what items are on the delegate's floor important?
Uh, there's one, in fact, I, I think a couple of these things, then might be exciting as well.
Then there's some excitement coming in there.
What's what?
Get ready, a couple of it.
There's, many, many school districts in our state, uh, suffer from poverty. And the, the, uh, members of the delegate assembly will be taking up an issue on poverty. Uh, what they're proposing is to convert all people that, all students that have uh, free or reduced meals to go from one FTE to 1.2 FTE. Which could generate considerable funds for school districts like ours that have a lot of kids who uh, free or reduced meals. Another thing that they're, will be presenting is the changing the, um, method of delivering the funds from the state. And we, how do you do it? Now you get several different payments, but they're in different proportions.
It's ridiculous.
And they're going to go, I think it's, I think if I remember right, they want to go, they want to change it to 25, 25, 25, 25. So you get an even proportion of funding several times a year instead of a bunch at one time and then not so much another time. So that'll help us too, to, to do our, so we won't have to do so much borrowing.
Yeah.
You know, there's a few other ones that I thought were a little bit ridiculous, but.
Those are the two that look, these are the ones you're pushing for.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to thank you for your work on that, Mr. Schmidt.
It's, it gets, it's very interesting because some of these, some of these people that propose these, uh, proposals here are very, very passionate about what they put into it. They get in there and they start talking about, they'll get, uh,
Worked up.
Worked up, yes.
Almost like the Democrat or Republican.
It's almost like that.
Which is going on today, yeah.
Yeah.
Or no, that Democratic.
Yeah.
Could, I'm sure, I think I mentioned that debate, the debate.
Anyway.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schmidt. And we also, for next month, we're beginning OE12 discipline and GP 10 conflict of interest. Um, the referendum discussion will continue to be part of our monthly meeting. Um, we have the second Friday count coming up. That's the second Friday of?
January.
January.
It was last Friday, yeah.
Okay. I hope everybody came on Friday. Was there any snore or anything?
No, I don't think so.
Were there any snore? That's good, because we want to kiss here. Um, academic excellence scholarship, Q12 cultural survey results from the staff, and start college knowing tests, human gap reduction, uh, Humpke, and the CWRC contract. Um, we have a lot of work in front of us, gentlemen, but thank you for your time, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, the mother, uh, daughter and father team that joined us this evening, connecting here. And, uh, I'm looking forward to being there on February 7th.
I'm watching during.
Hey, I'm not there yet. Your name's not Brian. No, I'm ready. There you go.
All right, I'm watching during.
I gotta call for the motion. You already pulled it. I call for motion to adjourn. Got one.
Thank you.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried.